The gymnasium had been transformed into something from a fairy tale. But Maria Santos felt like an intruder in someone else's dream. String lights cascaded from the ceiling like fallen stars. And the air, thick with expensive perfume and whispered judgments. She stood near the punch bowl, watching her daughter Elena dance with her boyfriend, both of them radiant in that particular way teenagers glow when the world feels infinite. Maria's hands, calloused from years of military service and recent construction work, gripped her small clutch purse a little too tightly. Before we jump back in, tell us where you're tuning in from, and if this story touches you, make sure you're subscribed, because tomorrow, I've saved something extra special for you. She had debated coming tonight. Elena had insisted, of course, begging her mother to attend as a chaperone volunteer. But Maria knew the truth that her seventeen-year-old daughter either couldn't see or chose to ignore. She didn't belong here among the other parents. With their manicured nails and designer dresses, their comfortable conversations about vacation homes and college trust funds. Maria's own dress, a simple black number from a discount store, felt suddenly too tight across shoulders that had carried rucksacks through the mountains of Afghanistan. The whispers started almost immediately after she checked in at the volunteer table. She caught fragments of conversations that weren't meant for her ears, but seemed deliberately loud enough to reach them anyway. A woman in pearls and a silk wrap murmured to her companion about how certain people shouldn't be allowed around children. Another parent, adjusting his expensive watch, wondered aloud if background checks were thorough enough for volunteer positions these days. Maria had served three tours overseas as a combat medic with the Eighty-Second Airborne Division. She had saved lives under fire, carried wounded soldiers to safety when helicopters couldn't land, and earned two Purple Hearts and a Bronze Star in the process. She had held dying nineteen-year-olds in her arms and whispered promises to their mothers that she would bring them home. But none of that seemed to matter to the parents of Westbrook Academy's finest. The trouble began when Elena twisted her ankle during a particularly enthusiastic spin on the dance floor. Maria moved before anyone else even registered what had happened. Her military training kicking in as she knelt beside her daughter, hands steady and sure as she examined the injury. Elena winced, but smiled through the pain, trusting completely in her mother's capable hands. That's when Helen Carmichael approached. Helen was everything Maria wasn't. Perfectly coiffed blonde hair that defied humidity, a dress that probably cost more than Maria's monthly rent, and the kind of confidence that came from never having to question whether you belonged somewhere. She was also the mother of Elena's boyfriend James, and had made her disapproval of the relationship abundantly clear from the moment the kids started dating six months ago.
"Perhaps we should call the school nurse," Helen said, her voice carrying that particular tone wealthy women used when they wanted to sound helpful, while actually being condescending. "I'm not sure we want unqualified people handling medical situations."
Maria's hands never stopped their gentle examination of Elena's ankle, but she felt the familiar tightness in her chest that came when civilian authority tried to override her expertise. She had treated everything from bullet wounds to IED blast injuries in field hospitals where the nearest doctor was a helicopter rideaway. A twisted ankle at a high school prom was hardly beyond her capabilities. "It's just a mild sprain," Maria said quietly, helping Elena to a nearby chair. "Keep weight off it for tonight, ice when you get home. You'll be fine by Monday." Helen's laugh was sharp and artificial.
"Well, I suppose we all think we're experts at something. James, honey, maybe you should call your father. He's an actual doctor."
The words hung in the air like smoke from a battlefield. Maria felt Elena's hands squeeze hers, her daughter's face flushing with embarrassment and anger. Other parents had begun to gather, drawn by the commotion and the promise of drama. Maria recognized the look in their eyes, the same expression she had seen on the faces of civilians in war zones when they encountered American soldiers. A mixture of curiosity, judgment, and barely concealed fear. Dr. Carmichael arrived within minutes, his presence commanding immediate deference from the gathered parents. He was tall, silver-haired, and carried himself with the authority of someone accustomed to being the smartest person in any room. He examined Elena's ankle with the same cursory attention Maria had already given it, then announced his diagnosis with great ceremony. "Mild sprain. Keep weight off it, ice when you get home." The exact same assessment Maria had made, but delivered with the weight of medical credentials and social standing.
"Thank goodness," Helen said, shooting a pointed look at Maria. "It's so important to have qualified professionals handle these situations."
Maria stood slowly, her military posture automatic and unmistakable. She had faced down enemy combatants and hostile fire, but something about Helen Carmichael's casual dismissal of her competence sparked a different kind of anger. It wasn't the clean fury of battle but the slow burn of accumulated slights and systemic disrespect. "I am qualified," Maria said, her voice steady but carrying an edge that made several parents step back. "I'm a certified EMT and former combat medic. I've treated everything from gunshot wounds to traumatic brain injuries in field conditions most people couldn't imagine." The silence that followed was deafening. Elena looked up at her mother with a mixture of pride and mortification, while James shifted uncomfortably between his parents and his girlfriend. Dr. Carmichael cleared his throat, clearly uncomfortable with the tension. But Helen Carmichael was far from finished. She drew herself up to her full height, her voice carrying across the decorated gymnasium like a prosecutor delivering a closing argument. "Military service is admirable, of course," she said, emphasizing the word admirable in a way that stripped it of any genuine respect. "But this is a school function. We're talking about our children's safety." I think most parents here would prefer medical attention from someone with, well, appropriate credentials for a civilian setting. The murmur of agreement from several other parents felt like a slap across Maria's face. She thought of the medic bag she still kept in her truck, fully stocked and regularly updated. She thought of the advanced trauma training she maintained through continuing education courses she paid for herself. She thought of the lives she had saved and the commendations she had earned. But more than that, she thought of Elena, watching this public humiliation of the woman who had raised her alone after Maria's husband died in an IED explosion during her second deployment. Elena, who had spent countless nights as a child helping her mother study for EMT recertification exams. Elena, who knew exactly how qualified her mother was but was powerless to defend her in this particular battlefield. "Mom," Elena whispered, her voice small and uncertain, "maybe we should just go." Maria looked down at her daughter, seeing the conflict in her young face. Elena loved this boy, loved the feeling of belonging to this world of privilege and possibility. But she also loved her mother, and was watching that mother be systematically diminished by people who had never risked anything more dangerous than a stock market downturn. The gymnasium felt smaller now, the fairy tale decoration seeming suddenly cheap and artificial under the harsh fluorescent lights that had been partially dimmed for ambiance. Maria could feel the weight of two dozen pairs of eyes on her, measuring, judging, finding her wanting. She had felt more welcomed in Afghan villages where she didn't speak the language than she did in this American high school among her fellow citizens. But Maria Santos had not survived three combat deployments and single motherhood by backing down from fights. She had not earned her stripes by accepting other people's limitations on her worth. And she certainly had not raised her daughter to believe that anyone had the right to make them feel ashamed of who they were or where they came from. "No," Maria said, her voice carrying across the suddenly quiet gymnasium. "We're not leaving. Elena wanted to come to this dance, and she's going to finish her night. And I'm going to finish my volunteer shift." The challenge in her voice was unmistakable, and Helen Carmichael's face flushed with indignation. The battle lines were drawn, and everyone in the room knew it. But what none of them knew was that this particular fight was about to take a turn that would surprise everyone, especially Maria herself. Helen Carmichael's face had taken on the particular shade of red that only comes from having one's authority questioned in public. She glanced around at the other parents, clearly expecting immediate support for whatever move she was about to make. Maria could see the calculation happening behind her eyes, the same kind of tactical assessment Maria had learned to read in hostile situations overseas.
"I think," Helen said, her voice carrying the kind of authority that came from years of getting her way through sheer force of social pressure, "that we need to have a conversation with the administration about volunteer screening procedures. This situation has gotten completely out of hand."
She pulled out her phone with theatrical precision, scrolling through her contacts until she found what she was looking for. Maria recognized the power play immediately. Helen was calling in reinforcements, using her connections to escalate a personal conflict into an institutional one. It was a move designed to humiliate Maria, not just in front of the gathered parents, but to create a permanent record of her supposed unfitness for community involvement. Dr. Carmichael placed a restraining hand on his wife's arm. "Helen, perhaps we should just focus on the children and let everyone enjoy their evening." But Helen shrugged him off, her attention already focused on the phone call she was making. "Patricia?" "Yes, it's Helen Carmichael. I'm at the prom and we have a situation that requires immediate attention. There's been an incident with one of the volunteer chaperones." Maria felt Elena's hands slip into hers, her daughter's fingers trembling slightly. James stood awkwardly beside them, his face a mask of embarrassment and confusion. Other parents began to form small clusters, whispering among themselves while stealing glances at the unfolding drama. The teenagers, oblivious to the adult tensions, continued dancing, their laughter and music providing a surreal soundtrack to the confrontation. Within ten minutes, Patricia Morrison arrived. She was the vice principal, a thin woman with steel gray hair and the kind of perpetually harried expression that came from dealing with teenage drama on a daily basis. She surveyed the scene with practiced efficiency, taking in the gathered parents, Elena still seated with her elevated ankle, and Maria standing with military bearing beside her daughter. "What seems to be the problem?" Patricia asked, though her tone suggested she already suspected this was more about adult politics than any actual emergency. Helen launched into her complaint with the fervor of someone who had been practicing her arguments during the wait. She painted a picture of Maria as an unqualified interloper who had overstepped her boundaries, potentially endangering children with her unauthorized medical intervention. She spoke of liability concerns and proper procedures, weaving in subtle suggestions about the appropriateness of having former military personnel around impressionable young people. "We simply can't have volunteers taking medical decisions into their own hands," Helen concluded. What if something had gone seriously wrong? What if her... "background" had led to an inappropriate response to the situation? The pause before the word "background" was deliberate and loaded with implication. Maria had heard that same pause before, in job interviews and parent-teacher conferences, whenever her military service became not an asset but a liability in civilian minds. The suggestion that her training to save lives somehow made her dangerous to children was both absurd and painfully familiar. Patricia Morrison listened without interruption, occasionally nodding or making notes on a small pad she had produced from her purse. When Helen finished her recitation, Patricia turned to Maria with a neutral expression that gave away nothing of her thoughts. "Mrs. Santos, would you like to respond to these concerns?" Maria had been in enough briefings and debriefings to recognize a trap when she saw one. Anything she said in her own defense would likely be twisted into evidence of defensiveness or aggression. But Elena was watching, and more importantly, so were dozens of other teenagers who were learning important lessons about power, privilege, and who gets believed when conflicts arise. "I provided basic first aid to my daughter using skills I've maintained through continuous certification," Maria said, her voice steady and professional. "I assessed a minor injury and recommended appropriate care. At no point did I exceed my qualifications or training."
"But surely you can understand," Helen interjected, "that parents have a right to know about the backgrounds of people who are put in positions of authority over their children. We have no idea what kind of trauma or instability military service might have created."
The accusation hung in the air like tear gas, poisoning everything around it. Maria felt the familiar tightness in her chest that came with being simultaneously thanked for her service and treated as though that same service had broken her beyond repair. She had heard variations of this theme before, the assumption that veterans, especially female veterans, were somehow damaged goods, ticking time bombs waiting to explode in inappropriate situations. Elena stood up abruptly, her injured ankle apparently forgotten in her anger. "My mother saved people's lives in Afghanistan. She has more medical training than most of the parents here. She's not dangerous. She's a hero." The word "hero" seemed to make several parents uncomfortable, as though Elena had committed some breach of social etiquette by using such dramatic language. Maria placed a gentle hand on her daughter's shoulder, pride and heartbreak warring in her chest. Elena shouldn't have to defend her mother's honor, shouldn't have to fight battles that belong to the adults.
"Elena, sweetheart, let the grownups handle this," Helen said with false sweetness. "You don't understand the complexities of these situations."
That was Helen's mistake, dismissing Elena's perspective as childish incomprehension rather than the informed opinion of someone who had lived with the consequences of military service every day of her life. Elena's face flushed with anger, and Maria could see her daughter gearing up for a response that would probably make the situation worse, not better. Before Elena could speak, however, the gymnasium doors opened with a metallic clang that echoed across the space. The music seemed to dim slightly, and conversations paused as a new figure entered the scene. Margaret Walsh, the school board president, strode across the polished floor with the kind of quiet authority that didn't need to announce itself. Margaret was in her sixties, with silver hair pulled back in a simple bun and clothing that suggested comfort rather than fashion. She moved with the deliberate pace of someone who had learned that rushing rarely improved outcomes, but her eyes were sharp and assessing as she took in the gathered crowd and the obvious tension. "Patricia called me," Margaret said simply, addressing the group without preamble. "She thought I might want to be aware of the situation."
Helen immediately brightened, clearly assuming that Margaret's arrival meant official support for her position. She began to launch into another recitation of her complaints, but Margaret held up a hand that stopped her mid-sentence.
"Mrs. Carmichael, I've already been briefed on your concerns. What I'd like to understand is why you felt it necessary to turn a minor medical incident into a public spectacle." The question caught Helen off guard. She had clearly expected Margaret to focus on Maria's supposed transgressions, not on her own behavior in escalating the situation. Helen's mouth opened and closed once before she found her voice again.
"I was simply trying to protect the children and ensure proper procedures were followed. Surely you can understand the liability issues involved when unqualified individuals..."
"Mrs. Santos is hardly unqualified," Margaret interrupted, her voice carrying a note of steel that made several parents step back slightly. "In fact, she's one of our most valuable volunteers." The statement dropped into the conversation like a stone into still water, creating ripples of surprise and confusion. Helen's face went pale, then flushed again as she processed the implications of Margaret's words. Maria felt Elena's hands squeeze hers, but kept her own expression carefully neutral. Margaret continued, her voice growing stronger and more confident with each word. "Maria Santos has been volunteering in our district for three years. She's helped with everything from school health fairs to emergency preparedness training. She's conducted CPR classes for our staff and has been instrumental in updating our crisis response protocols." The revelation was clearly news to most of the gathered parents, including Helen, whose carefully constructed narrative was beginning to crumble around her. Margaret wasn't finished, however. More importantly, Mrs. Santos is a decorated combat veteran who earned her medical credentials under some of the most challenging conditions imaginable. "When she assesses a medical situation, I trust her judgment completely." The words hit the gathering like a thunderclap, reframing everything that had happened in the past hour. Maria felt a strange mixture of vindication and embarrassment. She hadn't wanted to be defended as much as she had wanted to be respected. But Margaret's public support was shifting the entire dynamic of the confrontation. Helen Carmichael looked around desperately for support from the other parents, but found only averted eyes and uncomfortable shuffling. The social authority she had wielded so confidently just minutes before had evaporated in the face of Margaret's institutional backing. "I think," Margaret said with quiet finality, "that it's time for everyone to remember why we're here. This is supposed to be a celebration of our young people, not an opportunity for adults to settle their own insecurities and prejudices." The silence that followed Margaret's words was different from the tense quiet that had preceded it. This silence had weight, the kind that comes when truth cuts through pretense and forces everyone to confront their own assumptions. Helen Carmichael stood frozen, her phone still clutched in her hand, while the other parents looked anywhere but at Maria or each other. Elena squeezed her mother's hand again, but this time it felt like victory rather than solidarity in defeat. James finally found his voice and stepped closer to his girlfriend, his loyalty clearly established despite his parents' humiliation. The teenagers, who had been peripherally aware that something dramatic was happening among the adults, began to gather closer, sensing that the conflict was reaching some kind of resolution. Margaret Walsh wasn't finished, however. She had spent thirty years in education, the last ten as school board president, and she recognized a teachable moment when she saw one. Her voice carried easily across the gymnasium, reaching not just the parents involved in the confrontation but every adult and teenager present. "I want to tell you all something about Mrs. Santos that she would never tell you herself," Margaret continued, her tone shifting from authoritative to almost conversational. "Three months ago, during the severe weather event that knocked out power to half the district, Maria was the person who organized our emergency shelter at Lincoln Elementary. She worked for eighteen straight hours, coordinating with emergency services, managing supplies, and providing medical care to families who had nowhere else to go." Maria felt her cheeks flush. She remembered that weekend well, the tornado warnings, the power outages, the families with small children who had found themselves suddenly homeless when trees fell through their roofs. She had simply done what needed to be done, using the same crisis management skills that had kept her unit alive overseas. "When little Tommy Rodriguez went into diabetic shock," Margaret continued, "Maria stabilized him until the ambulance could get through the debris. The EMTs said her intervention probably saved his life. The Rodriguez family wasn't here tonight to see Mrs. Santos being questioned about her qualifications, but I'm sure they would have some thoughts on the matter." The story was news to Elena, who looked up at her mother with surprise and growing pride. Maria had never mentioned the incident at home, treating it as simply part of her volunteer duties rather than anything worthy of special recognition. That was her way. Service without fanfare, competence without self-promotion. Dr. Carmichael cleared his throat uncomfortably. As a physician, he understood the significance of the intervention Margaret was describing, and his earlier tacit support of his wife's position now seemed increasingly indefensible. Several other parents shifted uncomfortably, perhaps remembering their own interactions with Maria at school events and recognizing how their perceptions had been colored by assumptions rather than evidence. "But beyond her medical expertise," Margaret said, "Maria Santos represents something that I believe our community desperately needs more of: selfless service without expectation of recognition or reward. She doesn't volunteer to advance her social standing or to network with other parents. She volunteers because she believes in contributing to something larger than herself." Helen finally found her voice, though it came out smaller and less confident than before.
"I... I was simply concerned about following proper procedures. Surely you can understand that liability is a real concern in today's environment."
Margaret nodded slowly, acknowledging the comment without dismissing it entirely. "Liability is indeed a concern, Mrs. Carmichael, which is why our volunteer screening process is so thorough. Maria Santos passed an extensive background check, provided references from her military service, and completed additional training specific to school environments. She is quite literally one of the most thoroughly vetted volunteers in our entire district." The revelation hit the gathering like a physical blow. Helen's entire argument had been built on the assumption that Maria was an unknown quantity, someone who had slipped through inadequate screening procedures. The reality that Maria was actually more qualified and more thoroughly investigated than any of them left Helen's position completely untenable. Patricia Morrison, who had remained largely silent during Margaret's intervention, finally spoke up. "Mrs. Carmichael, I think perhaps we should schedule a private meeting to discuss your concerns about our volunteer procedures. This isn't the appropriate venue for this kind of discussion." It was a diplomatic way of ending the public confrontation while giving Helen a face-saving exit from her increasingly impossible position. Helen grasped at the lifeline gratefully, nodding quickly and beginning to gather her things. Dr. Carmichael placed a hand on his wife's arm, perhaps finally ready to provide the restraint he should have offered earlier. As the crowd began to disperse, Margaret approached Maria directly. Up close, her eyes held a warmth that her authoritative public demeanor had masked. She extended her hand and Maria shook it firmly, veteran to civilian, woman to woman. "I'm sorry you had to endure that," Margaret said quietly. "I should have arrived sooner." Maria shook her head. "You didn't know it was happening, and honestly, Elena needed to see that there are people who will stand up for what's right, even when it's difficult." Margaret smiled at that, glancing over at Elena, who was now surrounded by her friends and receiving hugs and support. "Your daughter is lucky to have you as a role model, and our community is lucky to have you as a volunteer." "I don't do it for recognition," Maria said, echoing Margaret's earlier observation. "I know," Margaret replied. "That's exactly why your service means so much." As Margaret walked away, Maria found herself standing alone for the first time since the confrontation began. The gymnasium had returned to its festive atmosphere, though she could feel occasional glances from other parents. Some looked apologetic, others simply curious, but the earlier hostility had dissipated completely. Elena appeared at her mother's side, having extracted herself from her group of friends. Her ankle seemed fine now, the minor injury forgotten in the excitement of the evening's events. She looked up at Maria with an expression that was part pride, part apology, part love. "Mom, I had no idea about the emergency shelter. Why didn't you tell me?" Maria shrugged, uncomfortable with the attention even from her own daughter. "It wasn't a big deal, just did what needed to be done." "It was a big deal to the Rodriguez family," Elena said, using Margaret's words. "It was a big deal to everyone here tonight who got to see what I see every day." "What's that? That you're the strongest person I know, and that you never give up on people, even when they don't deserve it." Elena's words hit harder than any medal ceremony or commendation letter ever had. Maria had spent years worrying that her military service, her deployment absences, her struggles with civilian readjustment, had somehow damaged her daughter or made Elena's childhood more difficult than it should have been. To hear Elena speak with such pride and understanding made every sacrifice feel worthwhile. James appeared beside them, looking nervous but determined. "Mrs. Santos, I wanted to apologize for my parents, especially my mom. What she did was wrong." Maria studied the young man who had clearly inherited his father's sense of fairness rather than his mother's social prejudices. "You're not responsible for other people's actions, James, only your own." Preparing and narrating this story took us a lot of time, so if you were enjoying it, subscribe to our channel. It means a lot to us. Now back to the story. "Still," he said, "I want you to know that Elena is lucky to have you as her mom, and I'm glad you're here tonight." The simple statement, offered without drama or grand gesture, somehow meant more than Margaret's institutional backing or the crowd's eventual vindication. This was a teenager, someone from the next generation, choosing to see her as Elena saw her rather than as Helen Carmichael had tried to paint her. The rest of the evening passed without incident. Maria continued her volunteer duties, monitoring the punch bowl and helping with cleanup, while Elena danced with her friends and enjoyed the magical night she had dreamed of. Occasionally, other parents approached Maria, some to apologize for their earlier silence, others to express support, a few to share their own stories of family members who had served in the military. Dr. Carmichael was among those who approached, offering a quiet apology and a professional acknowledgement of her medical expertise. He seemed genuinely embarrassed by his wife's behavior and eager to distance himself from her accusations. Maria accepted his apology gracefully, understanding that marriages often involve choosing battles and that tonight had not been one he was prepared to fight. As the evening wound down and teenagers began to gather for the traditional after-prom breakfast at a local diner, Elena came to say goodbye. She was glowing with happiness, her injured ankle completely forgotten, her embarrassment about the earlier confrontation replaced by pride in how her mother had handled herself. "I love you, Mom," Elena said, hugging Maria tightly. "Thank you for not backing down." "I love you too, sweetheart. Have fun at breakfast, and be safe." As Maria gathered her things and prepared to leave, Margaret Walsh appeared one final time. She handed Maria a small business card with her contact information. "I meant what I said about your value to our community," Margaret said. "We're always looking for people with your skills and dedication to serve on district committees. I hope you'll consider it." Maria tucked the card into her purse, touched by the offer but not yet ready to commit to anything beyond her current volunteer activities. She had learned to be cautious about taking on too much, about setting boundaries that protected both her well-being and her relationship with Elena. Driving home through the quiet suburban streets, Maria reflected on the evening's events. She had come to the prom expecting to feel out of place, and in many ways, that expectation had been fulfilled. But she had also been reminded that belonging isn't about fitting in seamlessly, it's about being valued for who you are and what you contribute. Her phone buzzed with a text from Elena, already at the diner with her friends. "Mom, everyone is talking about how amazing you were tonight. I'm so proud to be your daughter." Maria smiled, feeling something settle in her chest that had been tight for longer than she cared to admit. She had served her country with honor, raised her daughter with love, and contributed to her community with quiet dedication. Tonight, finally, all of those pieces of her identity had been acknowledged and respected simultaneously. The road ahead was empty, lit by streetlights that created pools of warm light in the darkness. Maria drove home knowing that tomorrow would bring new challenges, new opportunities to prove herself, new chances to serve. But tonight had reminded her that she belonged exactly where she was, scars and service record and all. If you've ever felt like an outsider looking in, if you've ever had your qualifications questioned because of who you are, rather than what you've accomplished, if you've ever stood your ground when it would have been easier to walk away, then you understand Maria's journey. Sometimes the battles we fight aren't against foreign enemies but against the prejudices and assumptions of our own neighbors. Sometimes courage looks like refusing to be diminished by people who mistake different for dangerous. And sometimes vindication comes not through our own words but through the voices of those who see our true worth and refuse to let it be ignored. Where are you watching this from tonight? Have you ever had someone stand up for you when you couldn't stand up for yourself? Share your story in the comments below, because every voice matters, and every story of resilience makes all of us stronger. The silence that followed Margaret's words was different from the tense quiet that had preceded it. This silence had weight, the kind that comes when truth cuts through pretense and forces everyone to confront their own assumptions. Helen Carmichael stood frozen, her phone still clutched in her hand, while the other parents looked anywhere but at Maria or each other. Elena squeezed her mother's hand again, but this time it felt like victory rather than solidarity in defeat. James finally found his voice and stepped closer to his girlfriend, his loyalty clearly established, despite his parents' humiliation. The teenagers, who had been peripherally aware that something dramatic was happening among the adults, began to gather closer, sensing that the conflict was reaching some kind of resolution. Margaret Walsh wasn't finished, however. She had spent thirty years in education, the last ten as school board president, and she recognized a teachable moment when she saw one. Her voice carried easily across the gymnasium, reaching not just the parents involved in the confrontation, but every adult and teenager present. "I want to tell you all something about Mrs. Santos that she would never tell you herself," Margaret continued, her tone shifting from authoritative to almost conversational. "Three months ago, during the severe weather event that knocked out power to half the district, Maria was the person who organized our emergency shelter at Lincoln Elementary. She worked for eighteen straight hours, coordinating with emergency services, managing supplies, and providing medical care to families who had nowhere else to go." Maria felt her cheeks flush. She remembered that weekend well: the tornado warnings, the power outages, the families with small children who had found themselves suddenly homeless when trees fell through their roofs. She had simply done what needed to be done, using the same crisis management skills that had kept her unit alive overseas. "When little Tommy Rodriguez went into diabetic shock," Margaret continued, "Maria stabilized him until the ambulance could get through the debris. The EMTs said her intervention probably saved his life. The Rodriguez family wasn't here tonight to see Mrs. Santos being questioned about her qualifications, but I'm sure they would have some thoughts on the matter." The story was news to Elena, who looked up at her mother with surprise and growing pride. Maria had never mentioned the incident at home, treating it as simply part of her volunteer duties rather than anything worthy of special recognition. That was her way: service without fanfare, competence without self-promotion. Dr. Carmichael cleared his throat uncomfortably. As a physician, he understood the significance of the intervention Margaret was describing and his earlier tacit support of his wife's position now seemed increasingly indefensible. Several other parents shifted uncomfortably, perhaps remembering their own interactions with Maria at school events and recognizing how their perceptions had been colored by assumptions rather than evidence. "But beyond her medical expertise," Margaret said, "Maria Santos represents something that I believe our community desperately needs more of: selfless service without expectation of recognition or reward. She doesn't volunteer to advance her social standing or to network with other parents. She volunteers because she believes in contributing to something larger than herself." Helen finally found her voice, though it came out smaller and less confident than before. "I, I was simply concerned about following proper procedures. Surely you can understand that liability is a real concern in today's environment." Margaret nodded slowly, acknowledging the comment without dismissing it entirely. "Liability is indeed a concern, Mrs. Carmichael, which is why our volunteer screening process is so thorough. Maria Santos passed an extensive background check, provided references from her military service, and completed additional training specific to school environments. She is quite literally one of the most thoroughly vetted volunteers in our entire district." The revelation hit the gathering like a physical blow. Helen's entire argument had been built on the assumption that Maria was an unknown quantity, someone who had slipped through inadequate screening procedures. The reality that Maria was actually more qualified and more thoroughly investigated than any of them left Helen's position completely untenable. Patricia Morrison, who had remained largely silent during Margaret's intervention, finally spoke up. "Mrs. Carmichael, I think perhaps we should schedule a private meeting to discuss your concerns about our volunteer procedures. This isn't the appropriate venue for this kind of discussion." It was a diplomatic way of ending the public confrontation, while giving Helen a face-saving exit from her increasingly impossible position. Helen grasped at the lifeline gratefully, nodding quickly and beginning to gather her things. Dr. Carmichael placed a hand on his wife's arm, perhaps finally ready to provide the restraint he should have offered earlier. As the crowd began to disperse, Margaret approached Maria directly. Up close, her eyes held a warmth that her authoritative public demeanor had masked. She extended her hand and Maria shook it firmly, veteran to civilian, woman to woman. "I'm sorry you had to endure that," Margaret said quietly. "I should have arrived sooner." Maria shook her head. "You didn't know it was happening. And honestly, Elena needed to see that there are people who will stand up for what's right, even when it's difficult." Margaret smiled at that, glancing over at Elena, who was now surrounded by her friends and receiving hugs and support. "Your daughter is lucky to have you as a role model, and our community is lucky to have you as a volunteer." "I don't do it for recognition," Maria said, echoing Margaret's earlier observation. "I know," Margaret replied. "That's exactly why your service means so much." As Margaret walked away, Maria found herself standing alone for the first time since the confrontation began. The gymnasium had returned to its festive atmosphere, though she could feel occasional glances from other parents. Some looked apologetic, others simply curious, but the earlier hostility had dissipated completely. Elena appeared at her mother's side, having extracted herself from her group of friends. Her ankle seemed fine now, the minor injury forgotten in the excitement of the evening's events. She looked up at Maria with an expression that was part pride, part apology, part love. "Mom, I had no idea about the emergency shelter. Why didn't you tell me?" Maria shrugged, uncomfortable with the attention even from her own daughter. "It wasn't a big deal, just did what needed to be done." "It was a big deal to the Rodriguez family," Elena said, using Margaret's words. "It was a big deal to everyone here tonight who got to see what I see every day." "What's that? That you're the strongest person I know, and that you never give up on people even when they don't deserve it." Elena's words hit harder than any medal ceremony or commendation letter ever had. Maria had spent years worrying that her military service, her deployment absences, her struggles with civilian readjustment, had somehow damaged her daughter or made Elena's childhood more difficult than it should have been. To hear Elena speak with such pride and understanding made every sacrifice feel worthwhile. James appeared beside them, looking nervous but determined. "Mrs. Santos, I wanted to apologize for my parents, especially my mom. What she did was wrong." Maria studied the young man who had clearly inherited his father's sense of fairness rather than his mother's social prejudices. "You're not responsible for other people's actions, James, only your own." "Still," he said, "I want you to know that Elena is lucky to have you as her mom, and I'm glad you're here tonight." The simple statement, offered without drama or grand gesture, somehow meant more than Margaret's institutional backing or the crowd's eventual vindication. This was a teenager, someone from the next generation, choosing to see her as Elena saw her, rather than as Helen Carmichael had tried to paint her. The rest of the evening passed without incident. Maria continued her volunteer duties, monitoring the punch bowl and helping with cleanup, while Elena danced with her friends and enjoyed the magical night she had dreamed of. Occasionally, other parents approached Maria, some to apologize for their earlier silence, others to express support, a few to share their own stories of family members who had served in the military. Dr. Carmichael was among those who approached, offering a quiet apology and a professional acknowledgement of her medical expertise. He seemed genuinely embarrassed by his wife's behavior and eager to distance himself from her accusations. Maria accepted his apology gracefully, understanding that marriages often involve choosing battles and that tonight had not been one he was prepared to fight. As the evening wound down and teenagers began to gather for the traditional after-prom breakfast at a local diner, Elena came to say goodbye. She was glowing with happiness, her injured ankle completely forgotten, her embarrassment about the earlier confrontation replaced by pride in how her mother had handled herself. "I love you, Mom," Elena said, hugging Maria tightly. "Thank you for not backing down." "I love you too, sweetheart. Have fun at breakfast and be safe." As Maria gathered her things and prepared to leave, Margaret Walsh appeared one final time. She handed Maria a small business card with her contact information. "I meant what I said about your value to our community," Margaret said. "We're always looking for people with your skills and dedication to serve on district committees. I hope you'll consider it." Maria tucked the card into her purse, touched by the offer but not yet ready to commit to anything beyond her current volunteer activities. She had learned to be cautious about taking on too much, about setting boundaries that protected both her well-being and her relationship with Elena. Driving home through the quiet suburban streets, Maria reflected on the evening's events. She had come to the prom expecting to feel out of place, and in many ways, that expectation had been fulfilled. But she had also been reminded that belonging isn't about fitting in seamlessly, it's about being valued for who you are and what you contribute. Her phone buzzed with a text from Elena, already at the diner with her friends. "Mom, everyone is talking about how amazing you were tonight. I'm so proud to be your daughter." Maria smiled, feeling something settle in her chest that had been tight for longer than she cared to admit. She had served her country with honor, raised her daughter with love, and contributed to her community with quiet dedication. Tonight, finally, all of those pieces of her identity had been acknowledged and respected simultaneously. The road ahead was empty, lit by streetlights that created pools of warm light in the darkness. Maria drove home knowing that tomorrow would bring new challenges, new opportunities to prove herself, new chances to serve, but tonight had reminded her that she belonged exactly where she was, scars and service record and all. If you've ever felt like an outsider looking in, if you've ever had your qualifications questioned because of who you are rather than what you've accomplished, if you've ever stood your ground when it would have been easier to walk away, then you understand Maria's journey. Sometimes the battles we fight aren't against foreign enemies but against the prejudices and assumptions of our own neighbors. Sometimes courage looks like refusing to be diminished by people who mistake different for dangerous. And sometimes vindication comes not through our own words but through the voices of those who see our true worth and refuse to let it be ignored. Where are you watching this from tonight? Have you ever had someone stand up for you when you couldn't stand up for yourself? Share your story in the comments below, because every voice matters and every story of resilience makes all of us stronger. Two years had passed since that transformative night at Westbrook Academy, and Maria Santos found herself standing in the same gymnasium. But this time, the circumstances were entirely different. The space had been converted for the annual Veterans Day assembly, with red, white, and blue bunting draped from the basketball hoops and folding chairs arranged in neat rows facing a small stage. She wasn't here as a volunteer chaperone tonight, but as the keynote speaker for an event that had grown from a simple flag ceremony into a major community celebration. Elena, now a college sophomore majoring in social work with a focus on veteran services, sat in the front row beside Margaret Walsh, who had become something of a mentor to both women over the past two years. The transformation in Elena was remarkable. The shy teenager who had once been embarrassed by her mother's military background had become a passionate advocate for veteran families, using her scholarship to study how communities could better support those who had served. The audience was a mixture of current students, parents, faculty, and community members, including several dozen veterans from various conflicts spanning from Vietnam to Afghanistan. Maria recognized many faces from her ongoing work with the district's Emergency Preparedness Committee and the Regional Veteran Support Network she had helped establish. Among them sat Robert, the school custodian who had shared his own Vietnam experiences, now serving as president of the local VFW chapter. But perhaps the most significant presence in the audience was Helen Carmichael, who sat quietly in the middle section with her husband. The relationship between Helen and Maria had evolved slowly over the past two years, marked by genuine effort on Helen's part to understand and make amends for her earlier prejudices. She had become one of the most dedicated volunteers for the scholarship fund Elena had established, channeling her organizational skills and social connections towards supporting military families rather than excluding them. Dr. Carmichael had also become an ally, using his medical practice to provide free health screenings for veterans and their families. His professional respect for Maria's medical expertise had grown into genuine friendship, and he often consulted with her on cases involving veterans dealing with service-related health issues. The transformation of their entire family represented the kind of change that could happen when people were willing to confront their own assumptions and grow beyond them. As Maria stepped up to the podium, she reflected on the journey that had brought her to this moment. The speech she was about to give had been months in preparation, not because the words were difficult to find, but because the story she needed to tell was still evolving. It was a story about belonging, about service, about the difference between fitting in and being valued for who you actually are. "When I first moved to this community five years ago," Maria began, her voice carrying easily across the gymnasium, "I thought belonging meant blending in. I thought success meant making my military service invisible, something I could tuck away like a uniform in the back of a closet. I was wrong about that, and I'm grateful to have learned better." She paused, making eye contact with faces throughout the audience, including several teenagers who reminded her of Elena at that age, caught between childhood and adulthood, trying to figure out where they fit in the world. Service doesn't end when you take off the uniform for the last time, it just changes shape. For some veterans, that means continuing to serve in government or law enforcement or emergency services. For others, it means bringing the skills and values we learned in the military to our civilian communities. But for all of us, it means finding ways to contribute that honor, both our service and our neighbors. Maria shared stories from her work with the Emergency Preparedness Committee, describing how military skills translated into civilian crisis management. She talked about the medical emergencies she had responded to over the past two years, the training programs she had developed, and the network of veteran volunteers she had helped organize. But she also spoke about the challenges, the assumptions people made, the subtle barriers that existed, the patience required to prove yourself over and over again. "Two years ago, I was questioned about my qualifications to provide basic first aid to my own daughter. Last month, I was asked to lead a regional training program for school districts across three counties. That's not because I became more qualified, it's because this community learned to see my qualifications clearly." The reference to the prom incident was subtle but unmistakable. Maria caught Elena's eye and saw her daughter's proud smile, remembering the young woman who had stood up to defend her mother's honor even when it might have cost her socially. That moment of courage had been a turning point for both of them, but also for the community that witnessed it. Maria went on to talk about the Veterans Scholarship Program that now supported twelve students annually, funded through a combination of community donations, school district matching funds, and grants Elena had helped secure through her college internship program. The scholarship wasn't just about money, it provided mentorship, career guidance, and a network of support that recognized the unique challenges military families faced. "These students aren't receiving charity," Maria emphasized. "These students aren't receiving charity," Maria emphasized. "They're receiving recognition of the sacrifices their families have made and investment in the contributions they'll make to our community. When we support military families, we're not being generous, we're being smart." Among the scholarship recipients in the audience was Maria Gonzalez, a junior whose father had been killed in Afghanistan when she was twelve. Maria Gonzalez had initially struggled with anger and resentment about her father's death, but through the mentorship program connected to the scholarship, she had found ways to channel those feelings into advocacy and service. She was now planning to study international relations with the goal of working in veteran services. Another recipient, David Kim, was the son of a Korean War veteran who had never spoken about his service until the community began celebrating military families more openly. David's grandfather had finally begun sharing his stories, and David was using those oral histories as the basis for a senior project documenting the experiences of Asian-American veterans. The project had already caught the attention of the local historical society, and was being considered for state-level recognition. These success stories represented something larger than individual achievement. They demonstrated how changing community attitudes could unlock potential that had always existed, but had been suppressed by prejudice or neglect. The veterans and military families who had been living quietly on the margins of community life were now recognized as valuable contributors with unique perspectives and skills. Maria's speech took a personal turn as she began to describe her own evolution from reluctant volunteer to community leader. She talked about the fear she had felt that first night at the prom, not just of being rejected, but of having her daughter suffer because of her own background. She described the choice she had made to stand her ground rather than retreat, and how that choice had created opportunities neither she nor Elena could have imagined. "I learned that courage isn't the absence of fear, it's the decision to act despite fear. And I learned that standing up for yourself isn't selfish. It's necessary, because when you refuse to be diminished, you create space for others to be valued as well." The audience was completely silent now, hanging on every word. Maria could see that her story was resonating not just with veterans and military families, but with anyone who had ever felt excluded or undervalued. The themes of service, belonging, and recognition transcended specific communities and spoke to universal human needs. She concluded her formal remarks by acknowledging the people who had made her journey possible. Margaret Walsh, who had stood up for her when she couldn't stand up for herself. Elena, who had taught her that pride and family was more important than social acceptance. Even Helen Carmichael, who had demonstrated that people could change and grow when given the opportunity. "This community is stronger today because we learn to see each other more clearly," Maria said. "We learned that different doesn't mean dangerous, that service takes many forms, and that belonging isn't about becoming the same, it's about being valued for who you are." The standing ovation that followed was long and heartfelt, but what moved Maria most was seeing the tears in Margaret Walsh's eyes and the proud smile on Elena's face. This moment represented validation not just of her individual journey, but of the possibility for communities to evolve and improve when people are willing to challenge their own assumptions. After the ceremony, Maria was surrounded by people wanting to share their own stories or ask questions about veteran services. A young teacher approached to ask about incorporating veteran perspectives into her history curriculum. A parent whose spouse was deploying wanted advice about supporting military families in the district. A teenager considering military service asked about the realities of deployment and homecoming. Each conversation reminded Maria why this work mattered. Military service created experiences and perspectives that could benefit civilian communities, but only if those communities were willing to listen and learn. The barriers weren't usually malicious, they were often based on ignorance, fear, or a simple lack of awareness, but they were real nonetheless, and overcoming them required patience, persistence, and allies willing to bridge the gap. Elena joined her mother as the crowd began to thin, both women still processing the emotional weight of the evening. Their relationship had continued to evolve over the past two years, moving from mother-daughter to something more like partners in a shared mission. Elena's academic work in veteran services was informed by her lived experience as a military child, while Maria's community advocacy was strengthened by Elena's research and policy perspectives. "I'm proud of you, Mom," Elena said quietly as they gathered their things. "Not just for tonight, but for everything you've built here." "We built it," Maria corrected. "That scholarship program was your idea. The mentorship network happened because you connected college students with local families." "This didn't happen because of my military service. It happened because we both refused to accept that being different meant being less valuable." As they prepared to leave the gymnasium, Margaret Walsh approached with news that would mark another milestone in Maria's journey. The State Veterans Affairs Office had offered Maria a position as regional coordinator for veteran community integration programs. The job would involve traveling throughout the state, helping other communities develop the kind of support networks and recognition programs that had transformed Westbrook Academy and the surrounding area. "It's a big decision," Margaret acknowledged. "It would mean leaving the local programs you've built, but it would also mean spreading what you've learned to communities that desperately need these models." Maria looked around the gymnasium one last time, taking in the decorations, the empty chairs, the stage where she had just shared her story with hundreds of people who had listened with respect and interest. Two years ago, she had stood in this same space feeling like an intruder. Tonight, she had stood here as an honored guest and community leader. The transformation wasn't just in how others saw her, it was in how she saw herself. She no longer thought of her military service as something to minimize or apologize for. She understood it as preparation for a different kind of service, one that built bridges between military and civilian communities, and created opportunities for others who might otherwise be overlooked. Elena squeezed her mother's hand, offering silent support for whatever decision Maria might make. Their bond had been forged in shared challenges and strengthened by mutual respect. Whatever came next, they would face it together, two women who had learned that standing up for what's right sometimes changes everything. The job offer represented possibility, the chance to help other military families find their place in civilian communities, to train local leaders in recognizing and utilizing veteran skills, to build networks of support that could prevent isolation and promote integration. It was exactly the kind of work Maria had been preparing for without realizing it, combining her military background, her medical training, her community organizing experience, and her hard-won understanding of how to navigate civilian prejudices and misconceptions. As Maria and Elena walked out into the parking lot under a clear night sky, Maria felt a sense of completion and anticipation that she hadn't experienced since her military discharge. The chapter that had begun with rejection and misunderstanding at a high school prom was ending with recognition and opportunity. But more importantly, it was beginning a new chapter that would extend her impact far beyond a single community. The drive home was quiet, both women lost in their own thoughts about the evening and its implications. When they reached their small house, Elena turned to her mother with a question that had been building throughout the night. "Are you going to take the job?" Maria smiled, feeling certainty settle in her chest like a weight she was ready to carry. "Yes, but only if you're willing to help me figure out how to do it right." Elena's answering smile was radiant. "Always, Mom, always. Up next, you've got two more standout stories right on your screen. If this one hit the mark, you won't want to pass these up. Just click and check them out."